So have you met with one of those or boys yet?
It's open eyes.
I haven't personally, I don't think, no, I haven't seen it.
Genius man, I might, I haven't been in shock. But I also see that they can work upstairs.
Yeah.
So that was clear.
So there.
And where do they went?
So there's.
I thought he was.
All right, you're on.
Ready to go? All right, good evening, everybody. It's 5:00 PM, we're ready to send Peterborough Select Board meeting for November 7th, 2023. I believe it's 2023 over.
It's November 7th.
Yeah. I'm Tyler Ward, with me are our fellow Select Board members, Phil Taylor and Bill Kennedy. We have Nicole McStay, our town administrator right here, and Assistant to the Town Administrator, Ally Kreutz, who's taking our minutes this evening. We are on the air, if you have any questions or comments, please do raise your hand. Call on you, and just state your name, you know, most of us know each other, for the record, and for anybody new that might be watching. Tonight's agenda, we're gonna hear, it's gonna be the Seth MacLean Show tonight. We'll hear about fire station's update, and water and sewer rate analysis, and a firm recommendation for that, and then vote on a fund balance amount to be used for the tax rate setting. That's always an exciting time of the year. And then a few people, a person to appoint to committee, and then some minutes to approve.
And then the non-public?
And then after that, we have a non-public session. Do you have artists a?
A, not one, a, colon, three, Roman numeral two, A for personal, yes.
Exactly, what else?
Yes.
All right. Seth, welcome.
To Director of the Board, Assistant Town Administrator. Power of my presentation, that'll look familiar to those who sat through the CIP last week. I didn't do a lot of changes to it, because presented to the CIP on this project as well. And at the request of the Board, back at the beginning of the month, each month, to update progress, get a summary of the activities that have occurred, excuse me. This is the last time I was here in early October. So slide one, you can see, everybody's probably getting pretty familiar with this, excuse me, design at this point. This is what we're currently looking at for a concept. But that's my main cover page, so we can just jump in. I like to start these with a quick acknowledgement. We keep adding names to this list of all the people that have worked on this project. And we've now added, I've added hundreds of members of the public, because we've had lots of, a lot of interest and a lot of engagement in the public input sessions, which I'll talk a little bit about in a minute. Also added a library director, Corinne, who's been gracious through this process and has helped us with securing the space we needed in the new facility. And many, many others, of which most of the people in this room are now on this list, although I need to get the PEC up on here as well, because you folks have been very, very involved and engaged with this project throughout. So in any case, we'd like to start with a thank you to everybody who's really engaging here. We're trying to put a project together that our community can value and be proud of. And that's the goal here. We know we have a need, but we want to do it right. I gave a little more detailed discussion, presentation last Thursday with the CIP, and you've heard it many times, so I won't dwell on it. But we've had a couple different phases. We've kind of moved out of the discovery phase, which I'm calling from a town meeting of 20, it actually goes back two decades. But more recently, when we've honed in on our project at this point, May of 22, through May of 23, where a lot of key decisions were made in terms of how much money we have available to us for design. Many, many meetings, formal and informal, to sort of set the stage for what this project should look like, and what level of involvement the Board and the community desires. Budget Committee, financial sessions to set project total bonding cap or limit. The formation of an RFQ and P selection team. And we selected construction management during this phase. So a lot, a lot happened over the year from May of 22 through 23 to help get us to where we are today. Next slide, please. June of 23 sort of kicked off the conceptual phase of this project, where we started to meet with our construction manager to help prep for, making sure we're asking for the right criteria through our RFQ and P process. As a reminder, our construction manager on this project right now for pre-construction services is Harvey Construction, who can, who also did our library project. The RFQ and P architectural services developed, was developed by a committee. It wasn't really a committee at that time. It was a team that was appointed by the Select Board, who would subsequently become the Building Committee. But anyway, a group of residents working with staff helped to develop the documentation to get out, solicit to architectural firms, and ultimately get us to the selection of SMP architects, who many are now familiar with, because they have held numerous sessions. Excuse me, I'll jump over to August, because all that work through June and July was to help us select what we thought was the right architect for this project. August is when the Building Committee began to formally meet, and the architects began digging into our project, understanding our goals, both financial, design, and programmatic. And started working through all the different important considerations, moving through a conceptual phase of a project. Flash forward to September, the Building Committee continues to meet. I updated you on that at that time. We started to consider things like sustainability initiatives, not initiative, sorry, sustainability for the facility, site plan. I'll step back quickly. August, we started to actually see some conceptual designs for the floor plan, the site, and other considerations. Into September, some refinement of that, which moved us up to the point where we could go to the public with the first public input sessions, which were online. A lot of members of the public viewed, a lot of members of the public attended one of the two sessions, and helped to provide feedback directly to the professional services team in the Building Committee, to help continue to mold a project that people are bought in and feel that they are a part of. October, Building Committee continued to meet, looking at a little bit more refined level of detailed planning, starting to get some ideas on budget, where things are trending with our construction manager. And of course, a week ago, we held our second follow-up public input session at the library, which leads me to the next slide. Which gets us to sort of where we are at today, by some of what we know, highest level, anyway. Right now, according to our construction manager, our conceptual design is trending on budget. It meets the programmatic needs of the fire station and ambulance service. And when I say on budget, I mean at or below that cap that's been set by the Budget Committee and Select Board. It reuses the motor pool building, which helped us to reduce the overall footprint of the building by about 30%. It improves the safety for pedestrians and motorists on the full site. You know, that was also a challenge and a goal that was set for this project. It incorporates sustainability considerations, which are still being worked through, and is approximately, like I said, 30% smaller than the original design shown at town meeting or prior to town meeting in '22. The new facility has the opportunity, hopefully within that budget, to function as a net zero facility, as it's being designed to hold enough solar to meet the facility's energy needs. So that gets us kind of closer to where we are this month. We've got upcoming Building Committee work scheduled for this month to consider additional concept refinement and budget, including some questions and comments that came up through the last public input session about access to the PCC front door. We got, we had a lot of feedback in the community on that. We were asked to take another look at it. That's already happening. In fact, I got some concepts back today, which went to the Building Committee this afternoon, just shortly before this meeting. Those will also go to the Rec Department and the stakeholders of that facility to take a look and see if we can't come up with a design that hopefully appeases all. Again, the goal is to make the entire parcel safer as we go through this process. And we know there's going to be some changes that have to happen. Some additional potential floor plan adjustments will be considered. Room sizing, fitness space, museum, that's relevant, because we're honing in on a design and we're about to see a budget. And there will certainly be more trade-offs as we go through the process of refining this and making sure that we meet our financial and programmatic goals simultaneously. Geotechnical engineering is advancing. They did some boardings yesterday out on the site. You saw a little drilling rig out there, that's what they were doing. And that will basically provide critical information so that the foundation, water table, and other structural and civil engineer components are considered as we go through the design and we start honing in on a budget. So basically, they're coring, and they're understanding what the subsurface of the parcel looks like, so they can anticipate that for the construction budget. It helps with things like I mentioned, but also things like depth of asphalt as you're laying down parking lot or entryways. So getting that scientific data helps the design team to make good decisions. Civil engineering site plans continue to advance, with additional soil survey work being scheduled, which will be required for what's looking like an alteration of terrain permit. It informs on things such as water table, known ledge, and other considerations. Of key consideration, concept site plan, which is still going through, trying to get us up to the 60% design mark, to get us sort of in the neighborhood of a cost estimate on what site considerations will be, will get its first sort of semi-formal, I call it, consideration of the Conservation Commission on November 15th. So we're gonna show them what we've got so far. We know there's some potential wetland buffer impacts, and that we need to go through the Conservation Commission and to the ZBA. So we're gonna sit down the civil engineers, architect, and go through where we're at today, and get some feedback from the Conservation Commission. The architecture team continues to advance plans specific to mechanical systems. And again, I'm talking about this month, leading up to our next meetings. Fire protection, structural engineering consideration, design updates to follow for Building Committee meeting on 11/16. My first mention tonight of the next Building Committee meeting, which will be in this room on the 16th of this month, which the Building Committee is expecting to see. Some more forward progress on those considerations and architectural, from the architectural team. And construction management continues to advise on all aspects of the project, and is working on estimating the project, so that when we get into the budget season, we're talking about real numbers. And they're engaged in that right now. They're working hand in hand with both engineering teams and the architects to continue refining and getting the budget ready for public consumption soon. I already mentioned that the next Building Committee meeting is on the 16th in this room at 10:00 AM. It's open to the public. You're encouraged to attend. There's a lot of good information that come out of those. They can be very long meetings, but we have a lot to discuss as we work on a difficult but rewarding project. Budget review session with Building Committee is tentatively scheduled for January 4th. That's a major milestone. That's when our construction management team has committed to having a financial number in hand that could be considered at that point, at which point the Building Committee will need to consider that. Maybe there'll be some options and some things that have to move in order to get to our budget. We're not certain of that yet. Like I said, we're trending on budget, but there's a lot of variables that are being priced right now. And that may lead us to some further discussions and digging in a little bit more on the conceptual design, preparing for budget discussions in this room with the Budget Committee and Select Board. And then we don't have an exact date yet, but there will be yet another public input event, similar to the last three that were held at the library, and that's scheduled for mid-January, where will be next iteration of the plans, available for public, large public discussion at that point, backed up also by some cost estimating at that point. Little less esoteric. This may be the video that was shown at the public input session. Yes, it is, so I've got this in here for you to take a look at. So this is the current updated, updated 3D model of the proposed project. If it'll play. It does have a little pause to start for some reason, so you can probably, give it a second. There it goes.
No, it's not that one.
Maybe back this line up. There is literally like a five-second delay on it when you start it, for some reason. And doesn't want to cooperate.
You can go out in the hallway and see if it's playing.
Well, that's unfortunate. It was working prior to this meeting, but who knows? Technology.
You could manually drag through it if you wanted.
Could probably. In any case, I already showed you this slide, but this is the current concept, looking from Elm Street. Not a lot of changes since the last one. We had numerous input sessions of Building Committee, but also the public, and generally didn't receive a lot of negative criticism or a lot of suggestions about the aesthetic design of the facility at this point. So this is still what's moving forward currently. Floor plan, for those who haven't seen it, and this is probably a little tough if people are watching at home or even in the room, these are available. Actually, I'm trying to get this one up on the site right now. We're having a little bit of trouble with that, but these are available. I can make them available, they're in the lobby. They're on the posters that are in numerous town facilities, and I'm happy to send it to anybody if they'd like to take a little harder look on their own time. In any case, that's the concept we're currently looking at from the top. A lot of work left to be done, a lot of considerations here as we hone in on budget, because we've got to make the money work with the program. So we expect that there may be some changes to the interior of the facility to help, but that remains to be seen quite yet. And the current site concept, although there are a couple of options that have come up since the public input session a couple of weeks ago, it continues to advance at this point. This is currently available on the project site, if people want to take a little harder look at that as well. Again, this is maybe minus a little bit of a change right here at the front of this, is the PCC. There's a pushback on this, and we've asked for some other considerations in that area. But in any case, this is very close to what will be discussed with the Conservation Commission this month. How to participate, if you missed the visioning sessions, you can visit peterboroughprojects.info, you can go to the town website. It will link you back to a video that looks just like that, because that's a screenshot of it, which is the entire last public input session that was filmed. It also gives you the opportunity to not just watch the video, you can also communicate on that website, based on your direct feedback, which we will receive. So members were unable, members of the public were unable to visit that night. You can visit the site, watch the video, and provide your feedback, good, bad, or indifferent. You can also scan the QR code that you can find on any of the posters at the town facilities or on the Building Committee, put together a citizen's guide to the fire station project. QR code's there, and, or, like I said, visit the town website and easily link over. There's also an FAQ board, maybe you have questions that you would like the larger public to consider. You can put them here, and they will be answered and available to the public. Constructive or otherwise, please engage with the project the best, as much as you can. Other ways to learn about the project and engage directly with the project team. Upcoming public events attended by a Building Committee member. Mostly Carl, has been at many local events handing out that backwards flyer, which I noticed on Thursday and had forgotten to fix. It's funny the things you gloss over. In any case, it actually reads the correct way. You don't need a mirror. It works well. It's got a lot of good information in it. It's in the lobby of the facility here. It would likely be available to you at any number of upcoming, sort of informal events that a Building Committee member may be at. You can attend a Building Committee meeting, as I mentioned, the next one is in this room, 10:00 AM on the 16th of this month. Or you can participate in the public budgeting process, which is going to kick off this winter. You can attend the next public input session in January, or you can schedule a time one-on-one to meet with myself, or likely pretty much any member of the Building Committee as well, have made themselves available to the public. In any case, I'm easy to reach by calling the Town House, central102, or set@peterboroughnh.gov. Or reach out to me if you'd rather talk to a Building Committee member, and I can put you in touch. I think that's about it. Just the video.
Nope. Pretty much you're all in.
That's what I've got. So a lot, a lot more work to happen this month, and looking forward to some significant conversations later this month with Building Committee and the architectural team.
Great, Seth, thank you. I appreciate that. Many, many people are getting a chance to comment and see what's going on. Anything to add? Right?
Thank you.
Any questions? Yes, sir.
Seth, thanks for the, for the update. And I do, but this is, I'm Tim Riley, I live on the Rundle Road in Peterborough. You mentioned there were some reconsiderations around the access to the food pantry, and I was wondering if you could be more specific about how the current, as in the latest, design might be reevaluated.
Yeah, at a high level, I can. I haven't had a chance to look at those concepts that came in this afternoon. But essentially, if I can synthesize it, the constructive criticism was a worry about access here for folks that are used to pulling through, because you could kind of see this dotted outline here where the current horseshoe is. And we were asked to take a look at this and see if there's a way that we can make traffic continue to flow through like it does now, while preserving green space for the, for the farmer's market, so.
I just wonder, I'm on the board of the food pantry, and I'm a volunteer there. And I think the sort of like in and back out again strategy is, it really isn't going to work very well. And we have, you know, events like around Thanksgiving and Christmas, where the volumes will end up backing, back that way, back this way, and down Elm Street. And I think that's going to be a real challenge for us. And the other thing is that, you know, we bring in two tons of food every other week to be unloaded there. And I think if we're pulling a truck in there and trying to navigate that and then carry the food in, it's really going to be much more difficult than what we have now. So, you know, if you could take a look if there's any possible way. I mean, you flashed up an earlier version, which, earlier, which had the driveway extending out into parking lot.
Kind of through here, didn't have to walkway, but it kind of went.
Yeah, I mean, it wasn't a pure preservation of the arc, but it, it's certainly better, that one is certainly better than, than the, you know, pull in, have to back around, navigate. And I don't have to tell you, the profile of our clients, they tend to be older, driving skills are compromised. I just think we're making a big mistake by not looking at something that would allow us to flow the traffic out.
Got it.
Appreciate it.
It may have been you that engaged directly with our civil engineer.
I did.
Yes.
Yeah.
She mentioned, so that's good. It was well heard and working on it. Thank you.
Great. Anyone else? All right, thanks. Thanks, Seth.
Actually, so, wearing a different hat, I'm Jim Hassaner. I'm speaking for Glow Morrison, who is President of the Board of the Food Pantry, and she's sick today. Vaccine and having a reaction. Anyway, in addition to what Tim just said in terms of the absolute need for a circular driveway or flow-through access, there was, at the last public session, a response from Jason, the SMP architect, which was not well received. So when Glow stood up and made a comment about, similar to what Tim is saying, it's really important for the safety and operational point of view, the response was, well, you'll just have to get used to it. And this is an unusual response, in my experience, in this whole process, which has been very respectful and also inclusive and iterative in terms of response. But it created a tone that would suggest that the fire station, in order to put the fire station in place, it may require disruption elsewhere. And I don't think that's a possibility. I think we can, we can have a great fire station, and it can be done in a way that respects the operations of other groups. In this case, the community center. So it was not, not received well, came across as arrogant and dismissive. And it could have been one of those comments where Jason, as soon as he said it, was regretting that those words even came out of his mouth. It certainly doesn't reflect the tone that I've experienced with the Building Committee or anybody else who's involved in my 27 years of this, in the town. But it was something that was unfortunate in terms of how it occurred. So we just wanted to make sure that the intent is build a great fire station, do it in a way that's mutually respectful of other operations and other groups in town, which is, I think, the spirit of our community, and not singularly focused on the fire station to rush it through, that will cause ill will down the road. So just, we wanted to, Glow wanted to flag that in addition to Tim's comments, just operationally, and just to make sure that the spirit of this is mutual respect and from your leadership role as the Select Board, reinforcing that, that value, that this can be done in a win-win way for all organizations.
Well, Seth, appreciate that. Yeah, I'm glad you both spoke up on that. Sounds like Seth, you're moving in a good direction.
I believe so.
Yeah, thank you. Anyone else? All right. All right, we look forward to the next update. And up next, we have Seth MacLean to talk about our water and sewer rate analysis.
I thought it was Nicole on this one.
Oh, is it? The letter was.
Now that I'm back, yeah, it is from Seth. It was both of us.
I can give a primer, if it's mine. This actually goes back to, for those of us that were in attendance for the approval process for the Cold Springs project. Commitments were made at town meeting a couple, a few years ago at this point, that rates would need to be analyzed at that time. Town Administrator was Rodney Bartlett at that time, and that was the commitment that was made. Now, notwithstanding the Cold Springs project, typically water and sewer rates, from my understanding, are professionally analyzed, typically through a third-party outside entity, usually about every five years or so. And what you, what they yield is a tool that you can also, you can change, you can use to make your own informed decisions about rates going forward. But it's a good drill to take a look at your financial picture of your enterprise fund, considering all your capital needs, labor, equipment, and other things that were detailed in the memo that I wrote. So that's kicked off a need to explore the possibility of working with, with a firm to engage in those services. And so doing, we talked to two specific firms that specialize in that work, CEI engineers and Underwood engineers, asked them to, first met with them, discussed our program, what our goals were. I already outlined the first goal. The second was one that we've been hearing for many years, which is for the town to evaluate our rate structure based on a more tiered or consumption-based or conservation mind. Doesn't mean you necessarily need to go that route, but evaluating it with a qualified firm to suggest there are other ways that we can, we could possibly bill our water and sewer users based on whatever the community's goal ends up being, the goal could be, we want to be conservation-minded, we want to have people who use less pay less, people who use more pay more, that kind of thing. So one of, that was the secondary goal. First goal, take a look at our financial picture currently. Our upcoming capital needs, evaluate and make rate evaluations. Secondary, looking at a secondary type of rate structure. In so doing, we talked to two firms, as I mentioned, and we found that the more responsive in terms of schedule and price would be CEI engineers, and thus my recommendation to the Board to consider. Anyone want to add?
Nope, you got it all.
Weird. Does that firm have local experience, or have they worked in the area before?
Yeah, they've worked in many New Hampshire communities on this type of program.
And they've worked with the town, Peterborough report. And one of, one of our Conservation Commission members, not once did, also works for CEI, so we do have a little bit of a connection there. He wouldn't be working on this project specifically, but definitely very comfortable with that firm.
60 grand for this, yeah?
It's a pretty comprehensive project.
And will also include public presentations.
Now, you mentioned the possibility of a rate structure that takes into account conservation.
Yes.
Isn't it already?
No, it does not, no.
If I use more water, I pay more, right?
No, not, only to a point. You only go down to a certain amount. We have a minimum bill.
Oh, right.
Which is, yeah, which, you know, for anyone in a, you know, one or two-person household, you hardly ever pay more than the minimum. I'd never pay more than the minimum. So it's, it really does not encourage conservation. And it also, I think, puts the onus, it's a bit of a regressive model. It puts the onus for maintaining the system on the people who use the least amount of it, as opposed to spreading the burden up to those who use more of it. So I think this would give the, the Board a lot of options. It seems like, I know 60,000 seems like a lot of money, but the analysis is quite comprehensive. They're going to look at our entire capital improvement plan, they're going to look at our system, all the work that Seth, Bosch, and the guys have done on the asset management will go into this. A lot of that was done in preparation for being able to build out a comprehensive model like this that will be able to then update year over year and have the rates reflect what our actual needs are going to be. Whereas right now, they don't. It's incredibly out of date. The model that we have cannot be updated to reflect the needs of the system at this point. I think it's a really good investment. It'll, of course, be split 50/50 between water and sewer, so it's not going to have an impact on taxation. And it's going to serve the users quite well, I think, in the future.
Is it going to take advantage of our GIS system?
Absolutely. It's, it's going to use the information that we have put into the GIS system and build out that, yes.
So we can have a good picture of our water needs?
Yeah. Everything that, that Bosch and the guys have done, we moved through that asset management program, is going to go into it.
Does it take into account, Seth, the age of the current infrastructure?
To a degree, yes. Yeah, I mean, we have a lot more work to do on asset management as it relates to that. We have some reporting that was done through an outside firm, working with the staff over a decade ago at this point. But it would certainly consider that. It doesn't develop us a new capital plan, but it gives us a tool that allows us to work with a firm such as this to incorporate our developing capital plan. And quite honestly, our capital plan for water and sewer needs more work. No question about it.
Glow, I accept the recommendation.
Anyone else have any questions? All right. Do you need motions, or just general?
So that's a motion?
That'll be my motion. I vote to recommend Seth's recommendation.
You second it, I'll second it.
Okay.
All right, all is in favor.
All right, we are at tax rate setting time. This is our favorite time of year.
I've got to go. I've got to go.
Yeah. It's a little bit delayed, so we're, but we've come prepared, I believe, with a recommendation, which I'm going to throw up on the screen now.
Now, there was, there was some discussion about complication with the schools.
Yes, and that's finally gotten resolved. We've got the school tax rate, or the school's levy and their portion of the tax rate, so I'll go through that in just a minute. I'm just going to, basically, I'm going to start at the end. And we are looking for a recommendation, or we have a recommendation for the select board on the use of fund balance to offset the tax rate. We would like to use one million four hundred and twenty thousand dollars to offset the tax rate this year. I'll walk through why. Here's a look at, this is assuming the one point four million is used to offset the tax rate. If we use that portion, that fund balance, we will be able to level the town's portion of the tax rate at nine dollars and seventeen cents. You can see the school rate is going to go up eleven percent this year. The state's portion of the rate is going to go up thirty-seven percent, and the county's portion is going to go up twenty-four percent. Now, obviously, the state education rate and the county rate are much smaller dollars, but they have significant impact on the overall tax rate, which you can see here, is the percentage of our tax bill going to each. And you can see the school is now up to sixty-three percent. That's what the school and the state education tax rate combined. It's a very big jump. And here you can see, year over year, the total tax rate and its changes, a really neat graph that Lily and Amanda put together that shows, over the years, what our tax rate's been, starting back in 2016 at twenty-nine seventy-one per thousand. And the increases or decreases are shown in orange. You can see a big drop in the tax rate that coincides with the town's last major revaluation. But we're, we've held pretty steady for the most part, haven't gone much over, we've gone to, we've got just a little bit over thirty-one dollars per thousand back in 2018, but then we had a revaluation that dropped the tax rate back down again. We had a much larger revaluation in '22, that took effect in '22, so you can see the big, the big shift there. But overall, we're looking at trying to keep it relatively level. Unfortunately, with the school's big change, we're definitely seeing an increase. Again, to go back to the fund balance recommendation, our fund balance as of June 30th, 2023, was three million six hundred and ninety-four thousand two hundred and twenty-three dollars. We have to remove the amount that was voted from fund balance to go towards special warrant articles at town meeting, that's two hundred and forty-two thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars. That leaves us, and then with the recommendation of one point four, two million dollars to use to offset the tax rate, that'll still leave us with two million three one thousand three hundred and ninety-three dollars of fund balance, the, which will be eight percent retained, which is more than the minimum recommended by DRA. So it still leaves us quite comfortable. You know, Lily needs less than a million dollars to meet cash flow needs, so that's still, we're well beyond that. So that's our recommendations, it was one point four million, one point four two million.
Say, for instance, someone is watching, and they're wondering, well, how did our fund balance get up to three point seven million dollars?
Mm-hmm.
What's the best answer to that?
There's a lot of ways that it goes up, it can get up to that. It's savings, obviously, the money that you don't spend is money saved. It's bringing in more revenues than we had anticipated. That can come from many different sources, but, you know, particularly auto registrations is a big source, if we receive more automobile registrations than we anticipated. Grants, unanticipated revenues from the state of New Hampshire that have gone to offset various programs, all these things, when you start to add them together, will get you up there.
New construction that adds value to value valuation?
It does add valuation, but that doesn't necessarily go to fund balance, but new construction will add building permit fees, for instance, and things like that. So if we didn't necessarily budget for it, you know, a big jump in construction, then there'll be a lot more in fees that are brought in.
Any other questions?
So, so my understanding is that Lily, that you need about a million dollars for cash flow purposes?
Right now, we have six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in unpaid taxes. That is the minimum amount of money needed for cash flow right now. So the, the comfort level is, is it six seventy-five for me in terms of what is needed to be retained? The DRA and the GFOA recommend a five percent minimum balance, but many towns choose to save far less. The, and then, but the amount of money that we'd be retaining is still eight hundred thousand dollars more than the minimum recommendation. So this certainly leaves us in a position where we would have close to one and a half million dollars to utilize at town meeting for warrant article support.
You hate when you are writing checks that for future.
It's already money, it's already money, it's money in the bank, so I just wanted you to understand that there's significant money still left in fund balance.
It keeps me on the chance that we didn't want to keep it.
But there, but there is over two million dollars that you would be retaining.
Yeah, I know. See that?
And this does get you a flat tax rate, or municipal portion of the tax rate anyways. We really can't control the school, state or county portions. Which would be three years in a row at nine seventeen. Yep.
That's, that part sounds good to me. It really does. I'm not overly comfortable with retaining as much money as we are, because that's glaring example of overexcessive government. I think some people were interpreted that way. If we dropped it down to five percent, what are we looking at?
Five, well, five to eight percent is a target that the select board has set in the past, so, you know, we, we were comfortable hitting that eight percent target. If the selectmen would like to, you know, negotiate, look at different numbers, we could certainly do that. Five percent retained is one point two million dollars. Yep.
At five percent, it'd be one point two.
Of, of fund balance retained, and then we'd be dropping the municipal portion of the tax rate too, and I can't remember what it was off the top of my head. Eight hundred thousand dollars more than? Yes. I didn't run that number. You didn't run that number.
Well.
I can.
Then that's the last time we can do it. I have a real problem, I mean, I'm already, yeah, I wasn't even prepared to discuss a number that high, one point four two million. Now that it's out there and there's no getting that cat back into the bag, which we've discussed before, we can't do it again. If we use, if we, if we spend it down to five percent, then we're all done. We can't use it in an emergency. If something spikes our tax rate and we need to help in the future, it's all over if we spend more than this. We can't help anymore, and then there could be a catastrophic rise in the tax rate that we can do nothing about. And I'm nervous about that.
I do have a few figures for using less fund balance, if that's helpful.
That is.
Tax rate would be, if you used no fund balance, your tax rate would be ten dollars and eighty-three cents, which would be a dollar sixty-six more than this year's nine seventeen. If you used a half a million dollars, it would be ten dollars and twenty-four cents, which would be an increase of a dollar seven. And if you used one million dollars, it would be nine dollars and sixty-six cents, which would be a forty-nine cent increase on the tax rate. I'm happy to go run a figure for using more than one point four two, if that is helpful. Here are those numbers, just so you can see them. I have one more figure, if it would be helpful for the conversation. If you did use one point four two million dollars and kept the municipal rate at nine dollars and seventeen cents, because of the increases at the school, state education, and the county, we are looking at a nine percent increase to the tax bill. Those rates are already known, they've been provided by the DRA. Those are not presumed numbers, those are actual numbers. It's the largest increase we've seen since 2016, and probably even further back.
And that's with using the one point four?
That is with using the one point four. We have no control over those other.
Well, rock and hard place.
Yes.
What kind of fund balances historically have we seen over the last, maybe ten years?
Between three and a half and three point seven million, which is where we pretty much are, yeah, started from. We're at three point seven right now, and then you use it, and then you add more. Every year, it's a, it's that ebb and flow of, we raise and appropriate a budget, we don't spend the whole thing, whatever we don't spend goes back to fund balance. Whatever we get more in revenues goes to fund balance. This year, this past year in FY23, my budget for bank interest, for example, was twelve thousand dollars because the interest was so bad. The interest, I negotiated every month for an increase to the bank interest, and we took in over three hundred thousand dollars in bank interest last year.
Well, nice work.
So, and that all went to fund balance. So it's, yeah. It's a, it's a, it's an ebb and flow where money is used for tax rate setting, and then it's added back in, and then it's used and it's added back in. So this is.
We didn't use any fund balance in '21?
No. No, because we use the fund balance towards the fraud.
Oh, right.
Fraud recovery. That would be more than one point four two million.
I didn't mean to give you an option to bring that up.
Thanks, Bill. I didn't plan to, but.
What I was, what I was, is that we used, fund balance was used, but what was the total fund balance? Was it always at five percent?
We have been between five and eight for the last five years.
Okay, so, but it's been kind of a sawtooth?
It is, yeah, and that's just the nature of, of.
Right.
The use.
Okay. Well, I'm in favor of a flat tax rate at this point. I think a lot of people.
Yeah. Well, so am I. Really love everything.
It'll be flat municipal portion, as you can reiterate, ads. The tax rate is going to go up.
Oh, I know that, but that's the only part we can control.
Right. The state portion of the education is up, and also the district.
Freedom of speech.
That's funny. You wouldn't want to see it go down a little bit? Nine seventeen, that's a boring number now, I mean, three hundred and twenty.
Well, I, I think if Lily's comfortable, the administration is comfortable with a lower number in terms of having cash flow and all that, I, that would be fine. I think a target of eight percent is not bad, particularly within DRA guidelines. Excuse me.
I agree with that. All right. Anybody have anything to add?
I have a question, just my own notification, but is the fund, this money we're talking about here, is it always used to mitigate tax increases? Is it, is there any history with ever using this money to invest in lowering operating costs through investments, or does that come from somewhere else?
So that's the money that Lily was talking about? We do have this money, this money is sitting in, in an account that is receiving interest. We do have other funds, trust funds, expendable trust funds, capital reserve funds, those are vested with the trustee of trust funds, another board, and they oversee that, and those earn, have earnings as well. Those are more long-term investments. Fund balance can be used three ways. You can use it to offset the tax rate, you can use it to offset the cost of special warrant articles at town meeting, or even offset the budget at town meeting, it just has to be explicitly written into it, people vote or vote on it. And it can be used after a public hearing and with permission of courts and permission of the DRA in order to meet an emergency need. And most recently, that was unfortunately the fraud incident a couple of years ago.
That's helpful, thank you.
You're welcome.
Jimmy, you want to add something?
Yeah, first of all, hats off to Nicole and Lily in terms of some really sound fiscal management, that's really appreciated. Secondly, I think it'd be helpful to give the taxpayer a break in terms of levelized rage, because next year, if the fire station gets approved, which I hope it does, that means there's going to be additional cost, which will impact the tax rate. So help the taxpayer now, knowing that the tax rate will probably go up next year.
Yeah, the municipal portion.
Just looking forward in terms of some impact, it'll be justified, but now's the time to give the taxpayer a break.
I'm hoping that this process that the district is going through in terms of reconfiguration, Nicole, and it'll be some relief in taxes, but that won't happen for seven years. But I do echo your sentiment, your sentiment about the work that Lily and Nicole and the folks do around here is just amazing.
Credit roll goes to Lily, she's done an amazing job, you know, I mean, the, the work she's done with the bank to, to increase her interest rates is huge, and I'm sorry, I missed that earlier, still a little, a little sunburn on the brain.
Not only on the brain.
All I know is that she's smiling. Yeah, she had to come back.
Okay. Well, what do you want from us?
Just need a vote on our recommendation to use one million four hundred and twenty thousand dollars of fund balance to offset the municipal portion of the tax rate.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that. All is in favor?
All right.
Yeah, thank you.
I asked about it. Is that right?
Well, I'm happy about that.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. All right. Up next, I would actually make a motion to appoint Gary Worsby, as a member of the Master Plan Steering Committee, I do liaison to that group, and I believe he's on the planning board also, so that helps.
Is Gary the fellow from the New Bernucet neighborhood?
Yes.
I think I know.
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah, he's a good guy. Young guy.
Energy. Go ahead, a second.
Bye, Gary.
All is in favor?
All right.
Bye. Great, thanks. And then minutes from October seventeenth, 2023.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All is in favor. All right, great.
As usual, well done.
Very affirmative. No blocking.
Great.
That concludes our public session, and I will make a motion that we enter not a public session.
Ninety-one dash A colon three, Roman numeral two A, personnel.
I'll second.
All is in favor?
Yeah.